All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Planning Commission meeting tonight. We're certainly glad that you're here. If you would please join me in a word of prayer and then we will rise and say the pledge of allegiance together. Thanks. Our dear Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity for all of us to come out together tonight as citizens of Morgan County to discuss just the business of living together in Morgan. So we ask tonight for your blessing, for your Holy Spirit to be with us as we talk about and discuss the things of the county together as co-citizens here. I'm grateful for the opportunity and we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
My pleasure. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Planning Commission, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda. We'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
No motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Any conflicts of interest to declare for any members of the Planning Commission for anything on the agenda tonight? Haven't seen none. We're going to move on to our period of public comment. So I love it when a lot of people come out because I get to say the same thing over and over again and everybody just looks at me like, "Here we go again." So for your benefit, we'd like to let the public kind of get an idea of how this works. So the first item on our agenda is a discussion, then the second one, we have a public hearing, and the rest, we do not have a public hearing for tonight. So the only thing that we have a public hearing for is item number seven, which is the Hassel Re Zone. Anything else on the agenda? Now is the time we open it up to public hearing. If you want to talk about anything else on the agenda or anything else that's going on in the county that you just want to comment on, quality of our roads, you know, anything like that, the value of our county commission and how well they do, anything like that, we invite you to come up. So now is your time to do that. We just ask that you come up. There's a microphone up here and just clearly state your name for the record so we can kind of get you on the record. Anybody for public comment? Okay, so just one more point of clarification. Since there's people here, I typically think people are going to talk about something tonight. So just one more clarification. If there's something on the agenda and you want to talk about it, you're not going to get a chance to talk about that at all unless you're waiting for item number seven. So as long as everybody's clear on that, we're going to move out of public hearing. All right. So we're going to move out of public hearing, or public comment, excuse me. Thank you very much. Words Matter and on to item number six on our agenda.
I'm Lance Evans, Plan Director. We're going to hear a presentation now from Lisa Benz with Landmark Design regarding the updated general plan draft. As you guys are all well aware, this has been an ongoing process. Been gathering a lot of data and Landmark has put together the information and the feedback they heard from the community and drafted this plan. I'm just going to turn it over to Lisa and we'll go from there. It'll be a short presentation and then some questions. Not short, but a presentation and some questions and I think that's it. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present the draft plan to you this evening. So as you know, the purpose of the draft plan is to establish that high-level overall vision of the community and we need to take into account the nature needs, existing needs, and unique opportunities that may arise. Just looking back on the public engagement opportunities that we've had throughout this process, we had a statistically valid community survey that went out to random households in the county. We've had a project website throughout the process and that has some interactive mapping tools and comment tools that people could utilize and that website is still active. People can still submit comments on that website. Last year at about this time, we had some public scoping meetings online. Following that, we had some focused interviews in depth with eight or nine different groups to drill down to different topics. And then in the fall, we had an online and in-person concept review meeting and kind of an extended public comment period through October for that. Now, the existing general plan in the appendices has all of these small area plans and as part of this process, we reviewed all of those general, all of those area plans and integrated kind of the commonalities. There were some really common themes and goals and values and so we tried to integrate that into this general plan to kind of synthesize all of those ideas where they were appropriate. This plan does make a recommendation to update those area plans. Some of those are almost 20 years old and, you know, maybe those values and the goals are exactly the same, but, you know, it's been long enough that it's time to kind of touch base and update those. And as you're aware, you have one of those already in, you know, process with the Peterson and Mountain Green study that's going on. So all of this public comments and the area plans fed into nine guiding principles that kind of drove the direction of the general plan update. So community character, preserving that rural agricultural feel of the community was really important. That was one of the top concerns of the community. Protecting agriculture for its value for, you know, livelihood and also the lifestyle and visual character that it brings to the community. Protecting the natural resources, you know, for quality of life and also for visitors, for wildlife, just everybody that enjoys those resources and also, you know, protecting your drinking water, all of those assets that are critical. Focusing growth, so where development can occur, doing it right. And then balancing the need, the desire for low taxes with the needs for housing, for services, and for infrastructure. On the transportation side of things, improving safety and connectivity on the community's Looking at housing, providing opportunities for growth within the community, you know, as children grow up and they need housing, trying to provide opportunities for them to find affordable housing, but also as people age up, people that want to stay within Morgan, bringing them opportunities. Looking at economic development, kind of proposing a two-pronged approach. So serving local residents and employees better with a few more options and also appealing to that tourism market so that hopefully people will come and spend their money and then leave. And that can also help fund some of those amenities that you need when you create what you want. Looking at parks and recreation, the last principle, providing that comprehensive connectivity network of parks and historical and cultural opportunities and attraction, points of interest with a complete trail network so that people can access those, you know, by vehicle but also by foot or by bike and contributing to the healthy lifestyle within the community. And looking at population growth, Morgan County between 2010 and 2020 had an annual, average annual growth rate of 2.65 percent and that compares to the state of Utah average for that same time period was just 1.66 percent. So you're growing, you've been growing a little faster than the state. When you look at the percentage increase, it's less than 1 percent of the state's total growth. So it's a very small percentage, but, you know, for your area, it feels like a big impact. Right now, the county is just over 12,000. The 2020 census put you at 12,295. By 2040, you're projected to reach over 20,000. So some decent growth coming our way. Land use concept is based on the agenda of focusing growth in specific areas. And so the concept focuses growth in the Morgan City Center, which is addressed in their general plan, which we're also doing concurrently with this process, and also the Mountain Green area. So you have, in pink, you have some of these resort centers around the county and these tend to be focused more on recreational aspects than residential. So those are not areas that can really accommodate growth for housing. And then you also have the settlements throughout the community. And again, the plan isn't recommending expanding housing in these areas at this time. It's just trying to focus it so you preserve that open space and make your maximum use of your infrastructure. This is the proposed future land use plan. Most of the area, you know, out in the county, still remains that natural resource and recreation and it's light green. We differentiated a little bit on this map. So we've shown those resort areas in pink so that you get a better sense of how much of that land is actually dedicated to those purposes. And we've also called out the public lands in this olive green color. Those are areas that are either state or federal be owned, so they fall under separate management plans. And then, let's show some zoomed-in maps here. Mountain Green has pretty much the area with the most change that we're showing in this version of the general plan and I'll show you a closer map of that. Again, these areas have not changed other than kind of differentiating some of these other land uses. So Mountain Green is where the most significant amount of change is recommended for the county. You know, the area plan already talks about a town center and providing some kind of more focused density and uses in that area.
Eighty-four, which right now sees a little over, it was somewhere between 10,000 to 23,000 vehicles per day. Now, we're going to take that kind of snapshot of the present conditions and compare it to projections of the futures. The next slide, this is the projected future year conditions, the percent change in the conditions between basically 2019, 2020, and 2040. So these are collected from the Los Angeles Front Travel Demand Model that's used to develop the RTP as well as the Morgan County Ogden Valley Rural Planning Organization's Long Range Plan. And so as you see here, according to the model and illustrated on the map, many of the major roads in the county will experience, are likely to experience an increase in traffic of some sort by 2040. This is from the next slide. Let's get to the fun stuff. So as you recall, one of the guiding principles of this plan was improving the safety and connectivity of the roadways in the community. As a result, we've put together some key network opportunities that include essentially things like, you know, improving and enhancing the walking and bicycling transportation network, mitigating congestion, improving road safety for everybody, speed management, traffic calming, multimodal main streets, greater connectivity for all modes frankly, and greater access for everybody regardless of age or ability. These recommendations again are based on the Morgan County Ogden Valley, what we call the RPO, the Rural Planning Organization Long Range Plan. Their planned projects essentially enhanced with safety and connectivity analysis and community feedback and outreach results is kind of how we build these processes. And so here you can see there's some possible next steps from Morgan County for addressing safety, you know, lighting, signage improvements, shoulder widening, travel lanes, gateway signs, those sorts of things, access management plans. And along with, you know, again, accommodating people walking and bicycling safely on existing roads without conflicting with vehicles, ongoing traffic, that sort of thing. So actually, let's go to the next slide. Let's move on to connectivity. So some possible next steps to consider in addressing connectivity could include, again, access management, creating multiple access points in residential areas perhaps while reducing the number of access points along a larger, more heavily traveled road, developing connectivity-focused policies and standards regarding like maximum block length and size, looking at local intersection spacings, minimum, what they call minimum connectivity index standards, and pedestrian circulation plans. Overall, just trying to limit or discourage things like dead end roads, you know, things that disrupt connectivity breathing. In addition, one of the key factors is again, active transportation, working with the Trails Committee and alternative load, alternative transit stakeholders and the community to develop an active transportation plan and build up the trail infrastructure. So again, there's a few projects here, the work, a few projects here from the Long Range Plan and some of these are already in the works, you know, the upstream range, that sort of thing. But the next slide, we're going to switch over to Mountain Green. Again, same kind of themes around safety, trying to accommodate people walking and bicycling safely without conflicting with vehicle traffic, increasing and improving the weight finding and signage throughout, implementing traffic calming measures in places that may not be congested today but could be in the future. So in addition to, actually, in addition to slowing down vehicles in very heavily trafficked, heavily pedestrian traffic areas. And again, this can be accomplished through numerous ways in the built environment, be it the legal speed limit, the designed speed limit, you know, not just, not just speed bumps and speed feedback signs, although they're very effective as well. But essentially looking towards creating a multimodal transportation network that supports everybody regardless of ability, age, or mode. And so again, regarding the connectivity, same themes, we want to try and increase crossings where feasible, especially, you know, the river crossings, the interchange, those sorts of things. And as well as the other elements of trying to discourage dead end roads, private streets that don't go anywhere, that kind of thing. But with that, I think I'm going to turn things back to Lisa. So it's free time.
So the general plan also looks at housing and Lewis Young Robertson in Birmingham did an analysis of the housing cost burden ratio. And so they compare the rent or your mortgage to your income. And based on that ratio, they can determine whether the housing is a burden or not. And in Morgan County, the rental prices compared to income is considered a burden because it is over 30 percent. Your owner situation is fine, that's a 24.1, but your rental situation is considered a burden right now. And Mr. Chart just gets into the amount of rental households you have, how many units are actually available. And this analysis found that you do have deficits in all of these categories. So they look at a percentage of the household area median family income. So they look at 80 percent, 50 percent, and 30 percent of this level to look at different levels of affordability within the community. So they showed that you have deficits in all of those categories, but one of the interesting things that they found in their analysis is that some of your affordable housing is occupied by people that have incomes higher than that level. So, you know, there's not really a lot that the county can do about that, but, you know, you have people with higher incomes living in more affordable housing. So that is taking a part of your affordable housing needs in the community. Looking to the future, they projected out the population growth at each of these different levels and then the affordable housing needs based on that. And that 80 percent of the median income level is going to be your largest growth category. So you're expected, right now, your affordable rental units in the county are, at that level are 475 and that is going to nearly double just within the next 10 years, the demand for that affordable level. And you can see the demand for the other levels there as well. So this chapter has some key recommendations to help meet your affordable housing needs. That includes expanding your zoning to allow for some of those higher density uses that we discussed in Mountain Green. Also resolving those infrastructure limitations to develop, development, including, you know, sewer, those packet sewer systems that we were talking about. That's a way to help bring a little more density into the area but still maybe keep that open feel within some of the rest of the county. And then promoting accessory dwelling units. You know, and that can be anything from a room in your house to a separate garage that's being converted or, you know, a unit of exposure garage or all kinds of, you know, all forms of ADUs, but just something to consider to help meet your housing needs in the future. Diving into economic development within the county, right now, Morgan County is capturing 66 percent of the potential sales within the county compared to the state average. So right now, you're doing well with motor vehicles and non-store retailers, but you're seeing sales leakage in all the other retail categories. So that means that people are traveling outside of the county for all of these other goods and services. So that's a potential for, you know, income within the county that you're missing out on. The highest leakage categories were in electrical and appliance, furniture and home furnishings, and general merchandise. So these are the categories that people are generally traveling down to the Los Angeles Front to meet those needs. Some opportunities that they recommend to help recapture some of that include properly scaling your economic development in the future. So it's not going to be Costco's up here. It's going to be more commercial growth that is, matches your existing neighborhood retail scale. And those could be everything from coffee shops and restaurants to tire stores and then, you know, getting at some of that tourism aspect, preparation services. So, you know, equipment, outfitters, and tours, those sorts of services. The locations for these are recommended, you know, again, in those centers. So in the Mountain Green Town Center, in the Morgan City Center, and then limited, you know, like you already have out in the rest of the county. It's already pretty small and limited commercial in the rest of the community. The plan gets into a lot of documentation on your existing natural resources and some of the hazards. So it documents everything from problematic soils and earthquake hazards to your community resources like your police and fire and public utilities. Obviously, the county does not provide public utilities like Morgan City does, which you do manage, infrastructure, roadways for the, for the community. So making sure that you're planning well for those needs in the future. Looking at recreation, kind of capitalizing on what you already have here and then there are a few, there are a few suggestions in the plan for some needs in the future. So creating again this network of parks and different points of interest around the county. So all these magenta dots represent different points of interest and these came from your county historian. You know, she has some great ideas and, and she has budget to help provide some signage eventually for some of these sites. And so if they can provide alternative signage and maybe eventually start connecting those with a network of trails, then it just provides opportunities for people to get out in the community more and appreciate what is already here. And as far as trails go, the general plan proposes kind of a two-tiered level. So in the orange here, this is a street-side proposed trail. So looking more immediately, it's a little bit easier to acquire a little bit of roadway, rideaway along your roadways rather than, you know, securing, you know, corridors for separated trails that are removed from your roadways. So this would be following along your existing roadways and maybe it's a wide shoulder. It could be a pathway if you've been in Midway and you've seen their street-side trail system in some areas that's right next to the road and in some areas they're able to remove it from the roadway a little bit where they have rideaway. So it could be something as simple as that, but also trying to get some decent shoulders in the community for the road bikers that you have using your roadways as well. And then longer term, the green dashed lines show a proposed trail network that would be non-street side. So this would be along, you know, the Weaver River potentially, along some of the creeks and jointages and the idea is that these would be, you know, just totally separated from the roads and offer a different experience for people that are not comfortable recreating along the roadways. And again, there's a concept, a more detailed concept for Mountain Green, connecting some of those uses with green ones throughout the community along roadways and also separated uses. And the plan wraps up with, the last chapter includes a list of catalytic projects and also goals, policies, and implementation measures. So the catalytic projects are just things that you could start working on right away that may help kind of give you a jumpstart and start seeing some differences in the community. It can be everything from adopting the general plan to enhancing, starting to enhance those streetscapes in those districts that we talked about in the Mountain Green area, avoid, you know, performing a road safety audit and developing safety plans to address those hazardous roadways in the community. It could also be, you know, acquiring open space along waterways now or when opportunities arise so that you kind of get ahead of the curve on that and safety planning in the long run. But the plan does include a long list of catalytic projects and the goal of policy and implementation measures that accompany those. So that's kind of a quick overview of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any questions?
Yeah, we could, um, so, this, this is the first time we've tried, you know, digested the, the, the general idea, the draft overview. So I suppose what we could do is just kind of start on one end and see if you guys have any general questions, and then we can just start a dialogue for it, or, but there's no decision we're part of tonight, it's just a, essentially just a, an opportunity for us to see the work that's been going on and then try and digest it, do something with it. So, we could ask, we can have comments tonight too if anybody hasn't.
While you guys are thinking, just really quick, uh, the tentative outline, I think, that we discussed going forward is, obviously, this work session with you tonight, uh, we'll get advertising out and have a public open house on March twenty-third, uh, that's the week before spring break, and that would be the opportunity for the public to come and see much more in person and in depth and spend a little time looking at the plan. The plan, of course, right now is online, uh, but we'll look at more signage and more information out of the community, something in the paper. And then we'd like to come back for, take the comments there that we received in the open house and come back to the public hearing with the Planning Commission on April fourth to, uh, your first meeting in April, against the night, but, um, and then, or second meeting. And then, uh, first meeting in April. And then, uh, depending on your recommendation and guidance, go to the May third for the County Commission to review it in a public hearing, and kind of go where we are there. That, that hopefully would finish up the process for the adoption of the plan.
Sure, no, that's great.
So we won't be having a work meeting to discuss more, we're just...
Well, I had planned on another meeting with the Planning Commission, um, is that what you're referring to?
Yes. I mean, after a public hearing or something, we, after we receive input, if we want.
Well, we can, we can certainly discuss that after the time of the public hearing.
We could do a focus group, I mean, if, the whole plan, instead of like the whole Planning Commission, like, uh, maybe County Council, I'm sorry, County Commission and, uh, Planning Commission, just a couple of representatives from each and just gather it, that way it's not a free-for-all.
Um, I, I mean, we're certainly open to whatever you guys need to do and however you want to process it. Um, I guess you're saying, I think, uh, so you're saying take the, whatever you guys hear at your public hearing, and then have a smaller, another work session in between to discuss how you want to implement that and make recommendations?
Yes. Is that... I think, I think that's certainly a possibility. I think a lot of it will flush out when we actually do that public hearing, and then we can, we can make that decision, have that discussion then, uh, 'cause we could either make a recommendation or we could postpone it and ask for a work session. Those are some of the options that we have at that time, right? So we don't, I don't, I don't know that we have to figure that out yet. There's a lot to digest, you know, publicly, everybody looking at it one time, and certainly it's been online, we've all had a chance to look at it and set, but I think we need to kind of wait for the next one, just, yeah, let it digest for a little while and, and break down the questions we have and bring it, bring it together, but. So having said that, I mean, I don't think there's any specific questions we have tonight, is there, about what's been presented? Anybody?
Well, I've read it over and I've marked it up, and I don't know the format to address my concerns, not necessarily now, that was my question regarding the work meeting.
Well, I, I would think we, we also have it online, there's still time for, for those comments to go there as well and, and give everybody an opportunity to look at them and bring back some, some answers, but we could do that too, right? It's still open, the website's still open for public comment?
My general, coming from the, an agriculture person, this whole general plan is relying on ag to provide the open space, the everything. So you have that box over here, yet on the other one, so you say you want trails along the Weaver River, which is ag ground, and you say you need to acquire it. How are you gonna acquire ground without development? The only way you're gonna get the trail is if the ground next to it is developed, but yet you're saying, no, you can't develop the ag ground?
Yeah, the, the plan does include some tools in the back, in the appendices.
I, I, I did, I did, in the appendix C, but it says to acquire.
Yeah, and...
And our county, we don't have the money, we, we have a county commissioner shaking his head. There, there is zero extra money, so you're not gonna be able to pay for that, and I don't think a person, an ag person's going to sell access along the river through their ranch.
And that's, yeah.
So, that, that throws that trails thing out the door. I mean, I, I just see just problems on how, how to implement this vision to keep, we talk about preserving agriculture, to keep it rural, to keep the open space.
What are the specific strategies to get there?
Right, you talk about preserving viable agricultural operations. I don't think there's one in the county that's viable, especially now. I mean, so...
We were, we, we were talking, not to cut you off, we, we were talking about how, how do we translate the values into tangible results, right? So what's the strategy for us to get to the objectives? And it starts with the values, it's really high level, we get that, um, you know, the, the values and the objectives are for preserving open space, et cetera. That'd be a specific question about that central corridor along the river. What's, what, what viable strategy do we have to implement that vision? That's, that's kind of what the dialogue we want, is that, what are, what are some other options, others, other than acquire, you know, as a, as a kind of a broad term?
And what is the, you talk about conservation developments. Is that just one residential unit per, per twenty acres? And then you cluster that? Could you talk about packaged sewer? Packaged sewer, you need density, and you're not gonna get the density with one per twenty, so...
Right, and the county would have to explore options of providing incentives, you know, allowing a little bit of increased density if developers are willing to cluster and provide that, um, infrastructure.
Yet this general plan's not recommending for growth outside of Mountain Green and Morgan City.
Which both have sewer capacity.
Right, but she talked about, you know, packaged plants, so are you saying the general plan would support development outside those two areas? That's...
We, we can continue.
Just, just some of our high-level thoughts, just to give you, I mean...
There's no, there's not any answers for sure.
Sure.
Well, I, that's like...
Yeah.
But just as a preview of the, kind of the things that, our initial thoughts were, um, how do we get from the vision to achieving those objectives with the resources that we got in the county?
And, you know, and I think too, the area plans kind of factor into that too, because as those get updated, um, I think, you know, and there are different ways that you can approach it, you know, those area plans can tie into updates of the general plan, so that if, you know, for example, the Peterson area, with all the changes that are happening in that area, if that becomes, you know, major focus for change and they want to see growth in that area, then that area plan could support it, and then that could potentially be an update to the general plan.
I think that's a pretty good preview of, of some of the things we've, the, kind of the big things we've been talking about, and it should give an opportunity between now and the next couple meetings just for us to maybe think through that. More of a warning, but that's...
Fair enough.
Anything else, any kind of big, high-level stuff that we, we want to bring up here? No? So again, it's gonna be open to the public, and I, I, I appreciate your overview, just so everybody understands that, hey, this was just our first, here it is, and okay, now let's start to process it, and there, and there's a, there's a process to go from public hearings and, and recommendations, and then ultimately to the County Commission, so...
Oh, excuse me, one other thing, the state legislature just added the water use and preservation that needs to be included in the general plan, and I don't know, were you aware of that?
I'm, I'm aware of it, but that wasn't included, obviously, in our original...
Right, because it just happened.
Right, and so, you know, the, I guess, talking with county and the city about how to, you know, throw in...
How to insert that, yeah, it's gonna be...
Yeah.
It needs to be done by twenty twenty-five, but if we're updating it now, it would make sense to...
Make sense for the state to expand the grant.
Yeah.
If they made the legislation.
I mean, where we are at in this process though, I mean, because we've done all these elements, there, I mean, there will be things that we have to then build on. Uh, there's a lot of stuff coming forward. We're very lucky to have a small area grant that's gonna look specifically at Mountain Green and Peterson, and that could, those, those types of opportunities, we will be able to take and build on if we have this framework set up in the general plan. So that's what we're doing, is establishing that high-level guidance and value system. And then we will break those down and take opportunities to, to build on that, and we go in-depth in those areas. So, I don't think we have to have all the detailed answers, and with this document, there's other implementation tools that we'll build on in there.
The one thing too, I'd like to add about the trail system, the, that totally separated, like, you know, riverside or creek-side trail network is a really long-term vision. Um, you know, for example, the Jordan River Trail in Salt Lake County took multiple decades, you know, just chipping away piece by piece and, you know, segments that some people thought were never gonna happen. So it's a multi-generational sort of approach, but the idea is that you at least have the vision on paper, and then where opportunities, opportunities arise, and you can kind of take advantage and you secure little pieces, and hopefully they're, they start to be connected pieces eventually, but, um, you know, it's definitely not gonna happen in the short term.
Sure, yeah, and, and I think we, we get that, that's the nature of vision, right? It creates, creates motion, right, and movement, so now we have this grand vision, um, we, the pieces come together, but, you know, either through ordinance or legislation, and those pieces come in place to fulfill that vision. So the vision's very high level, we have to, we have to have that first, and it does seem lofty, but lofty visions turn into tangible results, right? So, that's, that's what we're here, that, that's what this is all about. So I, I agree, I, I, I don't think we have anything else to comment for tonight, we, we thank you for your time, you know, thanks for all the hard work and, and the opportunity to come out and, and present this, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you for the time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven is next. to Mountain Green, I'm gonna have to figure this out, but it's just off of Old Highway to West Trappers Loop, and it is an area, this is the future land use map that we're looking at here, with Village Residential as part of it, and then just a touch of agricultural and also, um, those low density. The request is to rezone this from the eight twenty and RR one-two, RR, RR one-eight, which would allow for the use to go down to potentially eight thousand square foot lots. Given the configuration and the shape of the property with the road and subdivision requirements, although it allows for that eight thousand square foot lots, it's, it will not allow for, it, it will be a small subdivision, it will not be, uh, permission by the lots. The, I, the general plan, the current general plan, twenty-ten, um, has this outline for this type of growth. If my staff has reviewed the application and looked at it, uh, the, uh, completely that it meets the intent of the general plan goals and policies and the future land use map, um, I, and we are recommending approval. Um, is there any questions? No, no questions from us from now, we can hear from the applicant and do public hearing after that. If the applicant wants to...
If the applicant don't show, is there...
No.
Applicant's right here.
Does the applicant want to speak now? That would be a good opportunity, if you want to present anything, if, you don't have to, but...
Well, I can give a concept. So it's a residential development, you're right, not a lot of homes would be built. Anywhere from eight to nine homes will be in the area, smaller lots. The design that I have in mind was to fit similar to what would be looked at in the current setting, so there are...
It's just for us, if you would, please, thanks.
This is a A-frame type structure that's already currently there, there's two houses already in the area, so the intent would be to kind of fit the same type of housing in that area. And then the other lower lots would have more of, uh, single-family, uh, one-story homes, so smaller homes, uh, that would be built on the, on the lower half. So there's two lots, and there's other, other homes on the bottom, total of eight to nine lots in total. This would fit within the RR one-eight zone.
Okay. Questions? No? Okay, we don't have any questions now, we'll, we'll, we'll go on public hearing in a minute, which allows the public an opportunity to come up and comment on this, and then we'll give you, the applicant, you know, an opportunity to come up and, and, and address that. So before we go into public comment, just another disclaimer, there's people here, I'm, I'm guessing someone's gonna talk about this, um, uh, we're listening to what you, you guys have to say, we're gonna write stuff down, and then we're gonna try and address that in our, in our conversations with each other. Just please understand that we're, we're trying to address your concerns, and, and we'll have dialogue, but we're trying to make a decision here tonight, so just appreciate respecting that, that, that good order and discipline tonight. Thank you in advance for that. Having said that, um, we'll take a motion to go into public hearing on this item.
So I'll move.
And a second?
I'll second it.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're now in, uh, public hearing for item number seven, so anybody want to come up? Oh, we got someone that does, okay. So if you just tell us your name, where you live, and...
Carl, I live at five four four five West Old Highway, so that's my route path right there. We live so close together already in Mountain Green, I devalued all these pluses by thirty percent by trimming my toenails in the backyard one time. That was funnier than that. I gotta stop playing my jokes, it'll take longer. Okay, no, seriously, um, there's the, uh, walk-in, riding your bike path, uh, you will never see anybody on that because the cars are flipping by about six inches away from me at about sixty-plus miles an hour. I know the speed limit's supposed to be forty-five, but nobody besides me observes that, and I'm like a traffic cone in everybody's way, they're honking at me and flipping me off because I'm going the speed limit, um, in my own neighborhood. Up in the Highlands, there's no sidewalks, I can't walk my dog anymore. As the, uh, the house is built higher up and higher up, uh, what's supposed to be a twenty-five mile an hour road is now a major highway as those people are coming down to get to the Old Highway. I'm not representing the fire department, even though I am a firefighter. We have to go on more and more responses constantly, we're volunteers, we're not a paid fire department. Uh, we do have a paid day shift because the volunteers are all at work during the day, but, um, uh, we do have to, uh, for example, the middle school went in and we had to, the fire district had to, uh, figure out how to buy a ladder truck because we didn't have the right apparatus to respond to that structure. I, I don't see any familiar faces here, so I'm, I'm not trying to pick on this, the people that make this body personally, but your predecessors did an absolutely terrible job planning Mountain Green, absolutely terrible. We can't walk, we can't ride our bikes, we can't take our dog for a walk in the evening anymore. There's a park on the wrong side of the highway from anyone that's gonna use it, um, no mom will let their kid cross that highway because they're just gonna get killed. No mom will let their kid cross that highway because they're just gonna get killed. We're putting in, don't get me wrong, the armored car plant is awesome. I think it's great that it's coming into Mountain Green, but shouldn't there be houses next door to the park instead of an armored car plant? Couldn't it have gone elsewhere? So my concern with this is the closer those structures are together, the less defensible space there is. There's already a lot of high-density going into Mountain Green. There's apartments and other townhomes and everything that I'm not sure were mentioned when we were talking about the plan and the percentages of affordable housing and that kind of stuff. I'm not sure if that plan includes the ones that are already being built. What can I say? Judge Hassel is an awesome guy. I love him every time I see him. I think he's one of the most awesome guys, and I think exactly that. Yeah, I want Hassel to make a whole lot of money off this property. But I wish the lots were bigger so that there's fewer houses there. It's so hard to get on and off the highway right there. You've got, when there's a soccer game going on, when church is letting out, and when the ski lifts close, when it's morning rush hour and everybody's going to work, and when it's afternoon rush hour and everybody's coming home, that highway is miserable. It's ruining, it's ruined Mountain Green already. Mountain Green has been ruined by your predecessors who keep approving more and more houses and places for people to live and doing nothing about infrastructure. For me personally, the biggest thing is putting the interchange where it probably should have been in the first place on Trappers Loop Road. And your predecessors are like, oh, there's nothing we can do about that mistake. There is something they could have done about it. They could have worked with the state instead of preventing the state from putting that in all those years. And then they could have not changed all these awesome farm fields into high-density housing. And again, I think that Mr. Hassel should put those houses. I'd much rather have houses in my front yard across the street from me than an armored car plant. But I don't want to make it sound like I'm against the armored car plant because I'm not. I think it's awesome. I think one of our big problems is no one will come do business in Morgan County because we have a horrible reputation with business owners. You know, our county government is not admired outside of the county when it comes to doing business and that kind of stuff. I think that's all I have to say. So sorry for taking so much time. I do want to make a point. I'm not representing the fire department. And I do have to go because I'm late for training, so.
I have a little fun, Carl. You were the first person to greet me when I moved to Mountain Green, even before Dexter, just so for the record.
Wasn't it like emergency planning or something that we did? And then you were on the planning? You just reminded me. That's one thing I forgot to say. As far as we're concerned, the plan's a lie. Every time we turn around, the plan gets changed. The freeway interchange is in, which by the way, I've never bought my house if I didn't believe that freeway interchange was going in. And then all of a sudden, it's out, and now it's supposedly back in. You know, if you're gonna have the plan that tells us that's whatever the zone is, and then, you know, I think the Hass family is, are great people, but we thought that this was what that property is gonna be. And then to rezone it, how fair is that to the other people that have made investments in this community and that kind of stuff? So I definitely want houses to go in there as opposed to the other kind of things that could go in. But I hope that they're bigger lots than you are. That's just my position as a very close neighbor to whoever's moving in there. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else for a public comment on this? You don't get as much time as him, sir.
I'll be quick. My name is Doug Cox. I'm an adjacent property owner to this proposed rezoning. I'm downhill from the property. My main concern is the drainage, especially from the north side on the steep, steep, steep hill north of me. And there's also, I know, I know there's gonna be some comments with regard to the access and things like that, but I just asked the mechanic would definitely look at the drainage. I've got a contractor to build a house on my west property line, and he daylighted their sump pump right onto my property. So anyway, I've had about two feet of water on my property before in the west spring. So anyway, I just ask that the county do this right, and appreciate the time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other public comment for this?
I'm Mike Muncy. I live on the other side of the property from Doug. And they have some concerns, some of the similar ones. I won't reiterate a lot of those. I guess probably one of the bigger concerns we have is the safety issue of access to the property, where the access point is to go onto it.
Is there any comment on what I've thought or what you're thinking about?
If you, sir, I apologize. If you just ask us, we'll try and get those things answered for you.
I guess some guidance maybe about where the access will be or where it's intended to be. So that is a concern. We have an agglomeration of driveways right in the one spot, the access that goes into the park. And there's many times in the summertime when the parking lot fills up completely and the next resort is obviously the only place left is the state highway. And they'll begin parking both ways on both sides of the state highway. You have pedestrians crossing, cars coming and going. To add another entryway in there looks to me like only more problems. We've seen several accidents in the recent months that occurred during things that were happening at the park because there was congestion with cars on both sides of the road in addition to coming and going out of the three driveways on this side. So that's a concern. I don't know how we deal with that. Without, the more we put in there, the more congestion is gonna be under the current circumstances. That is probably our, one of our bigger concerns. The steep ground and drainage, I foresee as being a potential problem for us because much of ours is downhill from the property we're talking about. We'll drain over on ours. Back again, addressing the access to the property, there's a bridge there on the creek right where our driveway comes in. Point it out right here. This is our property right here. We have a driveway that comes down through the road. The creek comes this way. Now, the bridge that sets right here crossing the creek is a little higher than, especially coming from the header westward going in front of that. The people that are coming can't see over the ridge to see down in front of the proposed site to see people coming and going all the way. So a lot of times they're surprised by a car being in the road or pulling out in the road looking over it and don't see it because they're at a higher level to be able to see it. So that's a concern. Kind of a blind spot is created by the bridge. A lot of the property up on the upper parts of it is pretty steep. There's issues in the existing developments to the west where they have issues they're still dealing with in steep roads, steep driveways that they're having trouble plowing. We've heard several times that they're difficult times with the snowplow trying to climb those steep hills of the cul-de-sac. And to continue on around the hill the same way, we'll have more of the same spots. It's about the same slope, so that's gonna be a difficult issue to address, how to get the snowplows up there to plow. Those are some concerns we have. Not maybe insurmountable, but it's definitely, all of them add another issue, add another thing. And I think the long and short of it is that right in that condensed area right in front of the property is probably the densest property problems we have anywhere there. Anywhere between the store and the freeway, when the people come over Trappers Loop and attempt to stop at the stop sign, it's usually slowing down from 75 coming down the hill to rounding the corner. That's something a little less than 70 and heading west as far as they can go. By the time they get in front of the park, it's almost 70 again. At our driveway, there's early and late times that we sit there and watch and watch for quite a while before we decide it's worth taking a chance to get out in there. And there's some issues there, control issues or whatever they are, but the whole combination is just, that's a lot of things that we're concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'm Dixie Muncy. I'm married to that guy and live in that same place.
And the second person to introduce me to Mountain Green.
Yes, and we're glad you're still here. We appreciate your service that you give our county very much. I want to thank Lance for the good neighbor he's given for the last 31 years. He has let us use this property to pasture our horses, to ride our horses, to, for the neighbors, the Cox's and us, to ride snowmobiles, four-wheelers, whatever. I appreciate that very much. And I don't want to fight him on what he's doing. My main concern is the safety that the area was expressed before in that it is a dangerous area. I look out my window as I work every day and I see the bus stop at the townhomes. I see cars go through the stop sign on the bus. It is a blind spot with that bridge right there. And people are zooming, especially in the evening when a lot of people are coming from the recreational areas, inebriated, going too fast. It's a dangerous area. I've seen many accidents. I saw a person get caught up in the pole and burned right in front of my eyes at 10 o'clock at night. And it concerns me greatly, that's the safety. And I want Lance to know, we've offered him in the past, the Cox's and us, to buy his land, to relieve him from the stress of developing it. And I know he could make a lot more money from doing it. And we can't afford to pay development prices, but we still would like to work with him to buy the property and keep it as it is if that were a possibility.
Thank you. Anyone else for public hearing for this item? Go in once?
I'm Bruce Wood. I live in the Mountain Green area. Has the county, I wonder, given any thought to the overhead walkway from one side of the old highway to the other, to the park area that would allow for safer passage of people to get access to the park? Has that ever been discussed?
It's not a great place for dialogue. What we'll do is we'll write down the stuff that you're talking about, and then we'll try and get answers.
I think that's something that the county ought to consider because if there are a lot of, you know, high-density housing going in that area just adds more pressure to the recreational needs of the community. And we solved the long-term plan. There's gonna be more and more of that. So I think that's something that needs to be considered by the planning commission in the future. I know personally, I've gone through their twilight and, you know, a couple of occasions almost hit somebody, a kid on the side of the road trying to get across the highway. And eventually some child is probably gonna be hit and killed there unless some safety precautions are taken and improved in the area. And on another note, I'm wondering if the county commission, I mean, the planning commission has a good feel for how many acre-feet there are in this Morgan, I mean, the Leiber River, Off River, and how that's changed over time. Where does it stand now compared to what it was a decade ago? With a drought that's supposedly the worst we've had in a thousand years, how is that going to affect all the high-density housing that's being proposed in the Mountain Green area? And you've probably already addressed that, but if you haven't, I'd like to, would hope that somebody looks into that to make sure we're not getting into trouble in the future as this drought continues for another decade or two or three. So with that, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to talk about this? Still in public hearing on this? Nope, one more time? Okay, looks like we got it. So take a motion to go out of public hearing?
So I'll move.
And a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so public hearing's closed. We're out of public hearing for this discussion item. You guys want discussion, or do you want the applicant to have a chance to talk again? What'd you rather do first?
The applicant would like to answer any question.
If you'd like to...
Any of the concerns?
Yeah, talk to us about some of the things you heard.
And I just want to say, I grew up in Mountain Green. I mean, I went to Morgan High. I know everybody who was affiliated with the property adjoining. I want to build something nice. It's not a Cracker Box house that you just plug and play. I don't want that either. I want it to be nice. I want it to look good in the area. And the density is not highly unusual. It's not below the density across the street. And the RR110 is, it's in between the two. So it's not an unusual request, dash of density or the type of zoning that's there that I'm requesting is the RR110. It fits within the county plan, and it'll be a nice piece of property. Though it's not gonna be a lot of homes in it, eight to nine lots at most, and it'll be developed well. And I think the structures we have in mind will fit into the area. We've had a conversation with UDOT relative to the fear that I think wanted to identify on the highway with cars. And UDOT doesn't have a problem with the way we had it built in concept. The drainage will also come through concept planning as well. We've also had an engineer look at the drainage and what drainage and sewer lines and how that would all fit. So I don't see a problem with any of what was brought up. We've had many people look at it and consulted with it. And so far, they have been supported with UDOT and other engineers with the drainage issues. That's all I have to say. Thank you for taking the time. I appreciate it. Nice meeting you all.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. We may have some questions for you as we get into discussion, so we'll, thanks. Before we get started with any discussion for us, Lance, I just have a question, if you wouldn't mind answering this first. At what, a lot of questions tonight about safety of access, water congestion, drainage, things like that. At what point, this is a rezon request, right? At what point would, what would be the best opportunity to talk about this? When do we talk about this?
The first step is to rezone the property to see what level of density is allowed.
So none of this, we can't even start to discuss this stuff until the, today is like more of a conceptual rezone of the property, and then there's a subdivision application.
At a high level, we want to discuss and consider when we're rezoning, you know, are these services available? There is a water company there. There is a sewer company there. There is remote access. These things are available at a high level. So that would indicate that the rezone is potentially okay. We're not gonna get into the details until the subdivision, but they at least need to be present.
And if those things couldn't be met as subdivision, that's where it has to be mitigated. In theory, I mean, the first ask you have to say is, is this the appropriate zone? That's what the question we're trying to ask tonight. All the other things, as legitimate and valuable as they are, just simply, tonight's not the night to discuss those things because we can't even know if we can get to that point if the property is not rezoned to that. That's kind of my thoughts. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then the applicant, the developer developed property, will have to meet those. They will not be able to just dump their storm drain on their neighbors. They will have to meet traffic standards in order to get approved at the subdivision stage.
So for the public's benefit, a lot of questions that were answered tonight, a lot of these things, we just simply don't know at this point because it's not at that point where it's, you just make an application for a subdivision. Water, all those other things that are all really, really common topics. Go ahead.
And I guess, I mean, looking over the comments that were made and some of the questions, And I guess, I mean, looking over the comments that were made and some of the questions, you know, considering over the Mountain Green interchange and all that, the current county commission has been doing a lot of work on that, and so I believe last week, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I'm going to.
Looks that way.
The state legislature gave Morgan County five million dollars to move forward the, not gave, but it's.
Allocated.
Allocated, sure. That money toward the moving forward of the Mountain Green interchange. So that process will start to happen. When that interchange comes in, Old Highway Road will change dramatically. Yes, we do need to plan for it and address these issues and build it better than, you know, it was built for what we needed twenty years ago. It will have to be upgraded. So part of this development will address some of those needs. It'll take care, and we were talking earlier when the general plan, the little bits of the trail, there's a chance to fix a little bit of section of this road, one piece at a time. It is slow, it is difficult, it, there's ups and downs, but that's kind of the process. And hopefully, in the long run, we meet those requirements and we get those improvements.
And I know I'm not asking the applicant these questions tonight, that's not part of this application, but water's always a hot topic, since we're kind of making a public service announcement tonight. There's been a lot of discussion, we've had a lot of meetings about water capacity and that aquifer that's down there at the bottom, and I would just encourage the public to, well, for one, you're always welcome to come out here, we're, twice a month on Thursday, we're here, but we're also online, the videos are recorded online, the minutes are there for your reading. We have a lot of discussions about that capacity. It's not really a yes or no question, it's just the data's there, we've looked at the data, and we've made decisions based on the data that's been presented us, to us, based on the capacity of that aquifer. We're not.
Hydrologists, I guess they're.
Water people.
Water people, so we can't make that determination, but I just don't want the public to walk away thinking that we haven't thought these things through. It's really complex. We've been, we've been at this for several, several years, trying to look and make sure that these things are here, and it's just not simple, certainly not in a meeting tonight. But again, when people come out, last thing I want them to do is to come out and think that we didn't, you know, recognize that, number one, there's people here, because unlike the county commission meetings, we don't have very much excitement, there's always one at least, but there's typically two or three people, and that's it. So I like to grandstand just a little bit when people come out, because we care about you, we care about what you say. I just don't have the opportunity to answer all your questions tonight. All I can say is, trust us, but nobody wants to trust us. By the way, we're not the government, we're appointed volunteers for the most part, so anyway, for what that's worth. Just wanted to throw that out there, so everybody understands where we're at in the process. The application tonight, as a reminder, is for a rezone application, and the question is, is it, or is it not supported? Is it not consistent with the general plan, or is it consistent with the general plan? So I'd just like to start the discussion with that thought. Anybody?
So as far as like the drainage issue and all that, that one I get, that's going to take someone beyond us to figure that one out, right? You know, the engineer's saying, oh, that works.
Or it doesn't work.
Or it doesn't work, you know, but I mean, they would work it to make sure that things are hopefully good.
They have to.
Yeah, but the one that I do like, and I struggle with it, is the travel, the cars on there. You know, this is, and I'm not speaking for or against, so don't take it that way, but access on Old Highway Road is a nightmare.
Oh.
And I don't even know if it matters what time of day it is anymore personally, if you want to cross traffic. So I think there's viable here that there is a safety issue there, and I don't know where you stop or start with it, because everybody's banking on interchange. Who knows, even in my mind, the state's allocated five million for the interchange, but does that mean we're going to get it in fifteen or twenty years, or is it going to be in a couple of years? I don't know. So I think that maybe some of that ought to be taken into account before we rezone. You know, is this a good time to do it, or do we need to? But then the argument is, is if you don't do it, then it doesn't push for the interchange to come, so I struggle with, where's the line that you go? I don't foresee in my mind that it's changing what's already there with what he's trying to do, but I do think that the safety issue is something, and with the park right there, that place is a nightmare.
Okay, just giving my opinion. I've been thinking through that same, the very same thing, and there's a lot of issues that came up tonight that they are, they're not necessarily related to the application before us, but we do have business and staff questions later, and I think we're going to have, I'm going to bring up some discussion points about this too, because the public brought up some really good points, I think we need to think about what the next steps are.
Well, and I guess though, where this is legislation, this isn't something that, it meets all the things, so we have to pass it. You know.
We don't have to recommend.
Yeah, we don't have to recommend approval to the county commission on this one, whichever way we want to go. This isn't one of those where you strike the box and it meets it and it moves on. This one, I think the safety issue and that may be something to think about before we, you know, just say, okay, yeah, let's rezone it, because once you rezone it, then the avenue's set for him to be able to pursue what he wants. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just concerned that maybe there is a little bit of bearing on this traffic issue at this particular location because of the park.
No, yeah, concerns, these concerns are valid, but they would be addressed at the subdivision level. I have a question about the traffic. I've known subdivisions that it is required to do a traffic study. What determines that? Is that Mark Miller determines if a traffic study is necessary?
Yeah, the county engineer actually is the one that has the ability to say, yeah, we need a traffic study on this situation, just given the comments we heard tonight and the traffic situation, the development to the west, it's on the south side of the product, they had to do a traffic study there, been working with UDOT for a year, so they've been certainly going through these motions as well. So that's an issue that will have to be addressed.
At this.
But to Shane's point, when that gets addressed, is, you have a little, you have some flexibility.
But far as the traffic study goes, that wouldn't come into play till he starts to work towards the subdivision, right? I mean, that's down the road.
Well, but if this rezone got approved at the next commission meeting, he could come in the next day with a subdivision application.
Right, but I'm saying he, you couldn't make him do the traffic study at this point until he starts towards the subdivision concept in that area.
Where are we going? Because it's a legislative item, as you stated, you have that flexibility to say, I'm not ready for this yet, this is my issue, is how is traffic going to be mitigated? The applicant then has the opportunity to maybe bring forward some information if they'd like or not. That's up to them, and it kind of kicks it, they now know your issue, if they want to address it, they can, they don't have to. And you don't have to approve the rezone, or we can keep it moving forward. So I think that we're not going to require for a rezone, but we might deny a rezone to the county. So it's up to you, and that's certainly a significant issue that you can say, use it as a basis for not recommending the rezone.
But we don't know if traffic will be an issue until we do a traffic study.
Correct.
So it's hard to use that as a basis, our judgment.
So there is a traffic study that was done by UDOT a couple of years ago on Old Highway Road. I'm trying to remember the details of it, but in general, although not, the traffic was problematic, but it wasn't horrible. So that, I mean, that kind of uses as a justification not to have to require the interchange immediately. So the traffic situation, the demand, when you come to a traffic model, is not, I don't know that another nine lots would cross that line, but I don't know, and we need to give that information before we can approve the subdivision.
Again, I'm not recommending this, but there is also the possibility of listening to the concerns and postponing this. Our recommendation tonight as well, giving the applicant an opportunity to look at some of these things and concerns.
This is part of what always bugs me, bothers me. You know, you have the, you tell them that you want them to come voice their concerns or opinions, and then you go ahead and pass it.
No, I get it too. The thing that I struggle with though is, what's the application for? And is it consistent with the general plan? But to your point and Lance's point, I get that too.
It's one of those areas that it's tough, it's.
Let's go to this other room and see, like, what comments we got over here.
Yeah, just the things I'm listening to, I mean, yeah, I see that it is consistent with the goals of the general plan. I see it matches the characteristics of the neighborhood. Does it affect the, you know, other properties? It sounds like it could. I mean, it sounds like not a huge amount, we're not adding a large amount of homes, we're adding eight to nine homes, but it does add a little bit here and there, so yeah, there are some concerns there, especially being close to a park like that. Yeah, people won't cross the street, so those are just some of the thoughts I have.
To me, there are two separate issues. I can see Mr. Hassel's project adding some things, but certainly not tipping the balance. It's already, balance to me is already tipped. I don't know what the process is to ask the county commission to look at some, like painted lines or a walkway. Do we, how does that work, Lance?
For like creating a crossing or?
Okay, UDOT in that case.
UDOT, yeah.
UDOT has that portion of the road.
At that location, I mean, I don't think they have anything planned, and in fact, some development to the west with the Canyon View commercial development, that's their whole process is long-term, maybe that's a lighted intersection with the crosswalk, so it would be down that way. The trail is on the north side of Old Highway, so this property would actually potentially add to it and give the, you know, through the subdivision process, maybe additional width that's going to be added, but only for that section of the property that is being built.
Well, if you're looking down the road, if I understood it correctly, UDOT is saying they might close that whole road off down by the intersection.
We don't know, of course.
That's what I'm saying back, it's, this really isn't his problem, this is Morgan County's problem or UDOT's problem, and it would be a big problem for me if one of my kids got flattened on that road. And that's what I'm saying back to you, is there a process we can go through irrespective of Mr. Hassel's? I would like to know if UDOT will answer that question and do something to mitigate those.
We can certainly ask them what they would do and, you know, what improvements could be made to Old Highway Road.
Just a crosswalk with lights or something like that would, I know it's the state, is it a highway? Can you do that?
Yeah, that portion of it is.
But it's certainly not worth the life of anyone, really.
Absolutely. There is some question about whether or not the impact, I mean, if you're putting a life with crosswalk, are you actually helping safety? This is, we're at that tipping point where it was rural and was okay, but now we're going into, well, really safest thing to do would be a traffic light.
Well, if that saved a life, that would be great. To me, to put a park on the other side of all the residential is probably not a good move, and now we've got to change till we can make it safe for people to cross, in my mind.
And if you put like a traffic light with just a crossing through it, you know, it's not for cars, it's just totally pedestrian, that would be.
Yeah, and that's in response to the current conditions, that's what, I mean, and that's probably something we'll talk a little bit more about in business, but because it's not really related to the application, but there is, we know, I mean, there's an issue, so the question is, what can we do? Can we go to UDOT? Can we address some of this stuff? If I remember right, those, the homes right across from Kent Smith, that's their backyard that backs up to Old Highway, right? So it's.
The townhomes?
Yeah. No, 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 on the north side, just west of the city.
So where's the threat coming from is, where are the people going to get hit? Are they coming from across?
They walk along the road, it's really, really narrow and cars park.
The sidewalks on their side, isn't their sidewalk goes all the way along?
Yeah, people walk everywhere, and it narrows at the bridge, and people go too You know, part of the county, the things we talked about for the vision was, was traffic calming in those areas, so it's, we already know it's there. The question is just, what can we do? It's almost like another problem has risen tonight, and we need to talk about it, and we'll get, we'll get back on track with the application tonight, but they're all valid points.
But the applica, I mean, the safety deals with the application.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, yep.
And the traffic study's been, I mean, we've heard it before, UDOT comes in and says.
We're good to go.
We're good to go, but part of me thinks that's just the answer they want to give you.
Anything else, Steve?
I mean, I agree with, oh, pretty much everybody, you know, the sentiments that they've expressed, but I think the traffic issue is supposed to be caught at a later point in the, in this process, not at the rezone per se. And I mean, he meets the criteria, and I understand what you're saying, and Lance is saying that we do have the discretion at this point. The applicant has made investments into this already, you know, based upon what we've published in the general plan. And I mean, so I don't think a denial would be appropriate, a postponement, I mean, might be appropriate until we get more information, but I mean, he has met the intent of what the GP was asking for. And like Steve said, it's a separate problem, because regardless if, you know, we turn that into a fallow field or into a mega mall, you're still going to have the same issue. People aren't driving the speed limit, they are, you know, distracted driving, the traffic is probably greater than what UDOT thinks it is or expected to be, even if it was only two years ago. So regardless of whatever else we do tonight, I think we do need to somehow get that addressed.
Any other further thoughts or discussion?
No, I agree, the rezone, it does meet the intent of the general plan, and we just heard tonight, the update of the general plan, Lance even put, is recommending higher density in Mountain Green, more density in Mountain Green. So we, we're having a hard time dealing with the existing. This is what.
I'll just comment. I think the issue there is, is the infrastructure to match the density. And I'll go back to my tipping point, rather tipping point, we've been okay at this level of density, but when we take it up the next notch, yeah, that road needs to be fixed, and it needs to be widened and have a turn lane and have pedestrian bike lanes on the site, it needs to be a full road.
But it's a UDOT road, we, right, but it's a UDOT road.
Well, it is today.
But we keep passing.
We need to figure out those plans and see how they go forward.
So to that point, just, is the infrastructure currently there to support this zoning request? That's, I think it's a valid question.
Probably this one, but it's kind of at the tipping point, and I don't know how we can get UDOT to move on it.
Have developers, lobby them and push them, and say that the infrastructure's not there for what we want to do, and that the general plan supports it, so.
Because we have existing density across there in the town center that are, we have a developer with a vested right for 500 and some light homes.
Johnson's right to the, you said, isn't it?
You got a whole bunch.
That's past the tipping point, yes, so.
No? I know, we gotta...
It is an issue.
It is. This is, this is a tough one. So we had a lot of discussion. I think it's, someone put something to a motion and we'll see how, see where we're at. Anyway.
Well, to me, he's met all of his obligations for this to go forward. But there's gotta be one of the county commissioners that has the ear of UDOT. So I'm asking Lance if we can make a request to the county commission, whoever deals with UDOT, to put a bug in their ear and say, let's take a look at this road.
Bring him to the table.
What if we postponed it just to give the commission time to see if we could do anything?
Well, it's already past the tipping point to me. We say this is the tipping point. The tipping point, to me, was gone a long time ago.
I agree.
Forty years ago.
All we do though is escalate the slope of the tipping point.
Can our recommendation go with the condition? I said it'd be odd, wouldn't it?
I don't think you put conditions on rezones.
It's either for or against.
Can he go forward with the finding?
Basically a finding of, we need to analyze the traffic?
Well, a finding, that's a...
Conditions?
That's completely more information. Finding is, this is the information we're basing on to see if we want to...
Yeah, I think we only have three options, right? We recommend approval, we recommend denial, or we postpone it. Asking for something specific, though, right? We need this for clarification before we can make a better recommendation. Is that right? I think those are the only three options. I don't see any other option.
I guess that's my problem. I don't feel like we should put that on his shoulders. I think it's past that at that point. So I would be in favor of approving it with the request of the county.
Well, in the interest of moving it along, how about somebody make a recommend, or a motion and we'll, we'll see how everybody feels that way.
He's working on it.
Yeah, I think he is. Can we do it?
Who is? Me? I like Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the Hassel rezon map amendment, application number 22 decimal 015, changing the zoning district from RR1 and A22 R18 based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 10th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion to forward a positive recommendation. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay, or me.
Motion passes. You can see we do wrestle through a lot of stuff. It's very difficult. And for those that are interested, I'm sure we're gonna be having more discussion in business. The most exciting time of our planning session meeting is the business and questions. We just had a consultant out here for an hour. That's fine.
I know. It's up there.
Someone in the audience has one, they're pointing.
I'll try to speak really loud. This is a request for a private recreational camp conditional use permit. We discussed a little bit at our last meeting. The applicant has gotten us a lot of information.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. See, now we know who's representing what issues then, by the people who are left.
So the property is on ME160. A private campground resort is a conditional use. And we'll go to the county commission. This is the updated site plan from the applicant. At our last meeting, we had a lot of conditions. We still have several conditions that we need, there's more information going forward. We're early in the process for the applicant. They'd like to get started building the pavilions. I'm not sure the timing on the other elements of this conditional use. The conditional use is for the pavilion. At this location, just to orient you, this is Highway 66. The driveway access is down. They have this road here accessing 15, smaller cabin, 704 feet, single story. It's a two-story pavilion. It just comes up this way. It's not part of this construction, or this project. I didn't help at all. They've addressed the, I mean, starting with the fire concerns. They provided the information for grading of the driveway. There's a gate there that, an ox box for fire, to address fire concerns. The road will be widened and built for both 75,000 pound apparatus, fire apparatus. And then there should be a turnaround at the end for, should there be a fire truck gathered, they can turn around and get out. Let's see. They provided a lot of additional information about the floodplain. This is the elevation of the pavilion. Seems to be a very nice structure, providing that service. These are the smaller cabins. Again, only 704 feet, 15 of those. Floodplain kind of comes around, actually up through this part of the property down. So all this area of the creek up to this area will be in the floodplain. We even associates did an analysis of the floodplain and what it would take. Basically, they will elevate the structures and make sure that they're out of the floodplain. There may be additional floodplain roofing required. That would be the most information we're going to commit. The overall concept is what we're looking at tonight. The other key element of the study on the floodplain was that it removed, they did not believe that they cacked it in, that the dam was constructed. So this is, they anticipated a lot more water flowing down here than is actually flowing. We had concerns about parking. There will be parking here for the pavilion and then two spaces in front of each cabin. So there will be ample parking for the project. The conditions of approval are for future permits for well and septic. The permits must be received. Floodplain permits, obviously, for all structures. The other big one was a 50,000 gallon tank for fire suppression with the hydrants. That the applicant agreed to there. I'll leave it at that. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
I think the commission gave us time and Lance is helping with this. But, yeah, this is, he summarized the project aptly. It's the intent of the young family to develop this into just a recreational area for their use. So we tried to address the conditions and the concerns at this point and responded accordingly. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions?
Are these units gonna be at the discretion of the young family who uses them, or are they out for public rent?
It's for the young family, yeah. It'll be the young family that'll control that and use those, yep. Yeah, they won't be renting these out or anything like that.
It's a corporate retreat area for some of their corporate managers training. They do a lot of training.
I bought more than 10 young vehicles tonight, no?
I asked the same question, Bobby.
I'm looking really more for Steve in the area. Any concerns, risks?
My concerns are always the same. We approved this and then if the young family uses it how they say, I don't have much concern. But if they sell it...
Well, it's a conditional use permit. That, I was thinking through the exact same thing. It's not a subdivision. It feels like a subdivision almost, but it's not. It's a conditional use permit for a permitted use. Lance can answer better, but the conditional use permit would go with the use.
With the land.
It's an recreational area similar to some others, kind of along the highway there.
Whatever owner had it would have to abide by the same conditions.
But how many, how much acreage is it here?
160.
Is it, no, it's ME160 is the zoning.
About the building section, or are you talking about the whole acreage?
The building itself is...
160 acres.
160 acres.
So on 160 acres, you'd have really one dwelling, right?
Presidential dwelling.
Where's that? So this is a permitted use.
Yep, so then, does that mean we gotta change the zoning from what this is to make it work?
No, that's a permitted use in the zone.
These aren't residential.
The use would be a recreational campground or resort, which is a conditional use level three going with the county commission for approval. That's what they're requesting, this conditional use permit.
So just doing the conditional use permit allows them to do what they want to do?
Correct. We'd all get, well, what we would be approving is what's on the site plan with the conditions. Word at all. And then it would run with the land, just like...
Any other questions for the applicant? Staff? No? Okay. Thanks. Okay, any discussion? Questions, concerns? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move forward a positive recommendation to the county commission for the Young Ranch Condition Use Permit Application 22.007, located at 5450 South Highway 66, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 10th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks for coming early and staying late. Thank you for your service. Good to see you. Yeah, take care. What's that?
Mike couldn't sit for another one.
The longest one. Nobody's here, nobody's left? He just got some comments.
I will go over this quickly and come back to any questions you may have. Flat amendment. This is a PRUD flat that had an open space part called South Morgan Valley Drive. Here's Young Street on the south side there. 166 South Morgan Valley Drive. It's 11.49 acres. They're requesting to adjust the configuration of Lot 2 and the building envelope within that. When this flat was approved as a PRUD, the area, this was the lot. And this is the open space area around the lot. And the change is simply taking this area here that was in the lot, changing it to open space, and then adding the same exact area to be part of Lot 2. It works out better for the homeowner's home in here and wants to build an accessory structure. So it's a simple request. It meets all the subdivision ordinance and requirements. And it's got the committee approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
I do have one. The well has moved from the original plat to the proposed plat in the wellhead protection. So I'm, I'm at a loss. It's existing well. See, if you notice on the original, the wellhead protection goes all the way up to Francis Brown. And then it's, the wellhead protection's way away from that boundary line now. And even relation to the zoning where the...
We can double check if that's in the correct location. I don't know. They have a well. They have a wellhead protection. They have structures underneath that. I mean, I don't know that that's been changed.
It is on the...
Roger just mentioned to me right here. He said the well was on the wrong place on the original flat.
Where's his well at?
Where's it on the...
Yeah, where it shows on this one here. Yeah, so you're okay.
He said it's attractive. It's where it is now.
Okay.
So, yeah, it'd be okay.
Yeah, it just, it was different than the original one. That was...
Rod, if you'll unmute yourself, you can explain.
Well, it's...
I think we got it.
It was in the wrong place on the original one.
Did that answer your question?
Yep.
Yeah, anything else? Yeah, couldn't want to say anything. You don't have to. Anybody online? No further discussion? Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I will be recommending approval to the county commission for the Shady Hills PRUD subdivision flat amendment number one. Application 21 decimal 055, located at 166 South Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated March 10th, 2022.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 10. So before we get started with this, our bylaws say that the first meeting in March, we have to elect a chair and a vice chair. Start the discussion on that. If you don't have any...
Do you like the motion?
Sure, if you guys are... Sure, whatever you guys want to do.
I mean that we appoint Gary Ross as chair and Chris Merrily as vice chair.
Does that get a pay raise? I'll second it. Any discussion?
You ought to do it again?
Yeah. This is, both of our terms expire at the end of this year.
Or next year.
Or next year, 2023, this time. So we'll see. We'll see what happens. I know we got a lot of stuff on the agenda. I mean, last year, we've got an interesting, interesting couple of years ahead of us, so. But, yeah, to answer your questions, sure.
I'd go along with that. I'd go along with that.
Do you want to?
I'll do it.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so Lance?
I thought we had a great training on Monday night. Comments from you guys?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed it.
It was, it was nice to get the public clamor out of my head again. I don't know why that hit home with me during that training, but I was just like.
You were looking for evidence.
Yeah, I was like, no, that didn't have anything to do with what they're saying, right? Anyways, it was, it was good to have that reminder. Plus, who would thought a lawyer could be that entertaining, right?
He retired.
Okay.
They were great. Good presenters.
Well, I liked, I liked his examples he used to help you understand how it all worked and, you know, and pulled it together to give you, you know, a different insight with all this. So I'm not a big fan of all of them, but that one I thought was helpful. I thought they did a really good job.
It is, I mean, it's the Utah Land Use Institute, where you live, Utah, city and towns, Utah Planning, American Planning Association. So these trains go on and like those guys usually do at least a session or two at the conference, the UTEA meeting conference. So those, those opportunities are out there. So if you're ever, you know, want to attend anything, they're usually very good sessions and good opportunity. And as they pointed out, there's a lot of resources online. You don't have to attend, there's a lot of stuff that's videotaped. It's not videotaped, so whatever.
Well, you were, were you the only one that wasn't there? It was Steve. Steve, were you there?
No, me and Steve, so we were.
Do you want us to send you the link, call them there?
Yes, that'd be great, yeah. Yeah, I'd take them. You didn't record it, did you, Eric?
Oh, power went out on day 15.
The whole county, like cell towers went down, everything went down.
Not the whole county. Croydon was good.
Well, Croydon is.
They've got their own substation.
That's because the SOBs have really big generators to keep it going.
Question?
In person, they have other sessions in other cities, so if that was, several more sessions.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed it. I mean, I, we, we have been to, at least me and Debbie, Steve, I think. We've been through, weeks ago, and the full day ones down there and it sounds like it was, I'm not saying, that's not why I wasn't here, I just.
What about the open meeting?
Training?
Training that we're supposed to take?
We can put that on one of the meetings that are, isn't too busy if you guys want to do it together again like we did last time.
Yeah, I think that worked out good. Took care of the requirement. Yeah, could you please? Hello? Next meeting? Yeah?
Like two work sessions, so yeah?
Yeah, we just watched the video and we're done, right?
You guys will have to take your little test, you're on your, I'll get your certificate. So if you have tablets or whatever, you can bring them with you and do the test along with, I don't know if they'll be the same answer to the questions, but.
Lance will teach the test, it'll be all right. Lance will teach the test.
Yeah.
What else?
Yeah, I don't know, we talked about the general plan, I'm just like, that's, that's a little forward there.
Yeah, I think she's got a sense of what our initial concerns are, so that's good.
My initial concern?
No, no, I think, no, it's, it's valid. I mean, overall, how do we get to, how do we achieve these things?
Right, exactly. Realistically, how do we?
Maybe, I don't know, other than just say acquire the land.
Well, the story I always tell, I mean, it does, it's like, that's ridiculous. It's never gonna happen. A long time ago, I was a planning student and we said, wouldn't it be great if we had a trail enough from Provo to Ogden, connecting all the mountains and all that? Oh, that'd be so cool. It existed. Granted, that was decades, but that's how it happens, is putting that vision out there. And the general plan is the opportunity, you're not going to get sued over what you put in there. It's aspirational. It's dream big and put it out there.
Counties without vision perish.
But if you want.
But if it's in the plan, then theoretically, we can get grants. The other example of this is Boise, Idaho. They said, you know what? And I know this would never happen tomorrow, I can't believe what we'd say, but we're going to tax ourselves a little bit. They did a referendum to tax themselves for, to collect money to preserve hillside. Now, after 10 years, they started spending that money and they have a fantastic trail network.
And that could have been probably mentioned in the general plan as a tool.
Could have been.
There's still time for feedback.
I think they're hesitant to put something as bold as that out there. They don't want to, I mean, I think there would be a lot of pushback if a specific thing was there, but it's, again, it's stating that this is what we want to see. Having said that, good point, let's, let's add more examples. Just tell me some things.
I think Mountain Green is approaching the density of a black hole, though, I mean, in the general plan. Because it's like, we need more industrial in Mountain Green. We need higher density in Mountain.
In Mountain Green, you're going, no, it's.
Well, we have, we've planted, we've spent years planting that town center in those commercial areas.
Yeah, it sounds like they're trying to get more. Yeah, it sounds like they're trying to get even.
Even more.
More. And it's kind of like, I think we're tapping out Mountain Green at this point.
I don't mean to be defendive. You guys can tell your opinions, you know, but the reality is, is growth is coming. And where do we want to put it? Do we want to spread it all over, one acre, five acre, 10 acre lots all over the county? You can't do that and keep your taxes low. The key is to put it in a key area like Mountain Green. It can still feel open and, and have those elements. There's tough choices. I don't want to do that, I don't want to do that, but you have, one of them's gonna happen.
I think we need to, I mean, they do mention it, but I mean, the, I think we need to emphasize it more in the general plan that we need more commercial industrial base than we have, whatever it takes to get that. And, I mean, they talk about denser housing, which just sounds like, okay, we're just, you know, gearing up for more and more residential, which in the end is a tax loser unless you're willing, unless you're willing to be Boise in referendum.
It's not lost, yeah.
Well, I mean, the Boise, I think they, they're typically, they're going the other side because they're ridiculously expensive now. But that, their quality of life is what helped them bring in the good businesses. All the good businesses are there, so they got the quality of life. Margins at that same point where, you know, if we have the right amount of housing, we will get a little bit of the retail that will attract more office and more industrial uses. You gotta have, it's a tough.
Yeah, what comes first, right?
Which comes first, but honestly.
Do they say rooftops bring retail?
My question's really want to be urban or rural.
But what's gonna happen is this water, water use and preservation.
Mountain Green.
That we're gonna need, it's gonna say, one acre lots are.
Everything they're doing.
Should say no go. And the state will probably come down and say, because one acre lots are the worst as far as water.
Hey.
Usage, so.
I know, I'm 1.08 acres, so we're good.
But no, it's not good. If you're really concerned about water.
Depends on what your system is.
Well, they're, they're just talking water, not just culinary, they're talking all water.
Yeah, they don't, they don't know about the other projects and plants like in Mountain Green. I mean, they're not considering that there's, you know, 2,000 homes potentially growing in there in the next.
They should have had those numbers.
What's that?
There's like 4,000.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, just in the, in the nearer future, but.
They know about that, they factor that in.
They being the general public, they're not, seeing, piecing the whole things together. And, but I don't think that the, the commercial stuff isn't unviable because it's all kind of down that slope. It's always been that way, we just never had, really had it in the general plan, where you go east on a highway road from Mountain Green as you start to go past Woodcut Rose Hill and all that, and the land slopes down in that lower areas that are closer to the highway, that's, that highway commercial, I think there's a lot of room to do. They're gonna have to pump up to the sewer, but. And all, I mean, I'm no expert, but all indications are that aquifer is pretty big.
It's pretty healthy.
Yeah. Especially for, you know, the amount that we're doing here. I mean, those pumps, they did help last year. I didn't run out of water at all last year. I had no, no, no issues at all, just with that one pump. And that pump station goes up, it's gonna help you and the whole Highlands and.
I was never under.
No, you were never under?
I did notice the houses that had the, you know, conserve water signs in their yard had the greenest lawns possible.
Must be organic fertilizer.
It was very amazing.
This year, we were basically put out of things, water, if they do it one time a week.
Oh, wow. Your lawn's not gonna survive the summer.
One time a week and they had on there 20 minutes for pops ups and 40 minutes for rotors. Was that what it was, Debbie? Did that sound right?
Something, yeah.
One, one time a week.
And I pay one acre here for that message? Because we have to pay them, I don't know if you guys.
No, like put lawns in, if they're not, if it's not in, you don't put one in.
You're on a well, right?
Sure, that means community, but yeah, that's a well. Yeah. Enterprise has its own water company.
I have to pay Hoover and Highlands.
Your water bill's cheaper than mine. I'll guarantee you.
I gotta say, I drove through two times a week, my lawn didn't look fantastic, but it survived.
Yeah, this one did last year, worked pretty good. What about the traffic stuff? We talked about it earlier. Is there, are there any action items from the traffic discussion we had?
I'm gonna email you that and talk to them for Steve's comments, but I think it's just a giant cam branch because it's, well, if the interchange goes in, then that road will get significantly less traffic.
But, yeah.
So how much do we want to do? But we don't know when the interchange is going to go.
Well, but.
Five or 10 years from now? With, with that contribution allocation, it's gonna look it up substantially.
That's just for the environmental impact study. That $5 million is just to pay for environmental.
In preliminary engineering.
$1 million will be the environmental impact study and then the other four will go to design, I believe.
The thing about it, no matter what they do with that interchange, and that you're still gonna pick everybody up from the west coming to the interchange, if they do away with the one, and that something at the park.
If they shut the other one.
Yeah, if they shut.
They'll come from the west.
No, they might.
Because they're gonna go from the west, head to east.
They're gonna shut that one down.
Oh, they shut down.
No, no, he's saying.
Everybody coming out of the Highlands.
Highlands will head.
Whisper Ridge.
Will head the trappers.
They're gonna head west.
And that's why I advocate they should keep that open. We need to have an EGR.
But even that, there's not, I just think that something across there, that park is probably a good thing to put regardless with the interchange.
Yeah, I think what we're saying is, hey, in a meeting, we have some public concerns that are addressed about this and what has you got, what can you say? I think that's the action item.
I can tell you that when they put the townhomes in, I objected about the line of sight, the dating the property that had the line of sight and they said it's not, Martin already asked them, the county specifically asked them and they said it's not an issue.
I pulled out that. I pulled out that. You're in the road before you can see out.
It's a lot of traffic, it's way more than it used to be, but it's not.
I can barely get out of my mouth at the other end.
Yeah.
Well, yeah. They need to put, they need to put a middle lane.
DNF, so. So we will talk to you that. Oh, the, the other issue though, I mean, a lot of what we were hearing is issues with Kent Smith Park and the lack of parking and what are we doing on the county home property? That's where the problem is.
You'd have to get rid of a pickleball court and put a parking lot in there.
You're bad as a soccer field, I mean, get rid of the park to put in the parking lot.
I mean, that's the question.
Yep.
Maybe the sewer district will let us park and fill in those, one of those ponds back there after they put the membrane bioreactor in there.
They're keeping those ponds active and putting in the bioreactor.
For secondary water or?
I don't know what the purpose is, but I know that there.
There was some talking a couple of years ago for that. You can clean it instead of pumping it in a Weaver. No? Okay, did you get me and Dustin change input for the minutes?
I did get, I did get an email from Dustin. Did I get all your corrections?
I think so.
There goes my sarcasm. All right, well, if you've got all that, then we'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, who's second with that one?
Steve.
I wasn't here, but either way.
No, dismiss.
Oh, so moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I won't miss it.
You made her for a couple of weeks, you just got out of the.
She put down member X.
Who's member X? I think more than the traffic, people drive like her.
I was a DC driver. Busiest business we've had in a long time.